Chairman Johnson, I'll call this meeting to order. Starting on my far right, we have Mr. Tom Crowe, Mr. Alan Jenkins, Mr. Jack Shield, Ms. Anne Ward. To my far left, Mr. Mike Metz, then Mr. Bennett Garner, and Mr. Daniel Bowles, and I'm Tyler Johnson. And would anyone give the indication? Ms. Anne?
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for this day and for all the ways that you've blessed each one here. We just ask that you guide us and lead us and direct us in the best way forward for the citizens of Newberry County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I ask everyone to look over the minutes from last meeting, and once they've done so, I'll take the motion. Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Now on to new business.
Tyler, first case has been withdrawn.
Yes, do I need to really just state that or?
You can if you want to.
Alright, the first item would be the rezoning request for one real estate parcel totaling fifty-three point three seven acres, located at one thirty-five Ancient Oak Lane Prosperity to be rezoned from split zoning of RS Single Family Residential and R two rule, two R two rule tax map number five nine zero dash nine has been removed from the agenda for tonight. Moving on, our second item is MA zero two dash zero eight dash one nine dash two five, a rezoning request for one real estate parcel totaling twenty-nine point one acres, located at one seven nine nine White Rose, Newberry, to be rezoned from RG General Residential to R two rule, tax map number three four zero dash three two, or dash three dash two dash one one one.
Alright, so if any of you looked at the GIS, um, you probably saw that the applicant here is different from what's showing up online, and that is because the applicant, um, just purchased the property last week. Um, so current owner is here tonight requesting the rezoning. Currently, as you see on the map, um, this piece of property is zoned RG, which is general residential. General residential, um, ten thousand square foot lot size allows for manufactured home parks, apartments, um, just very high density, uh, residential. The applicant and her family, um, are moving out to this piece of property. Their intentions is to have two homes, um, one for herself and then one for her daughter and son-in-law. Um, the actual request for rezoning is so that they can have a couple animals on the property. Um, comprehensive plan supports this rezoning, and as you see, um, a lot of the contiguous, uh, parcels around are currently R two rule.
Will they have to, we're putting two homes that'll have to be split?
They would not, so the way that the zoning ordinance is wrote for family members, as long as you have enough land to, to support it, so if it goes R two, you'd have, minimum would be two acres, so they have well beyond that. They can have up to three houses for family before subdividing it. So let's just say they have three out there and someone else, a family member comes about, then yes, at that time, that person's acre would have to be, or however many acres that they're getting would have to be subdivided. But the ordinance allows for up to three as long as it's family. Now, if they come in and want to do that and their intentions is to rent, no, you gotta subdivide, but for family purposes, it is allowed.
Without current zoning, they could move a whole lot.
Current zoning could go mobile home park, apartments, um, yeah, it, it, that current zoning would open a lot of doors, um, as it stands right now.
The way it is now, ma'am?
The way it is currently, it is, yes, uh, the rezoning would actually protect it larger lot size, mhm. Yeah, right now in RG, they couldn't have, um, cows, chi- uh, they could have chickens under certain stipulations, but, you know, no major livestock would be allowed out there. And I don't think it's intention for this to be a full working farm, just a couple hobby animals. Okay, so just for formality, what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna present, if they have questions for myself, they'll ask. Then if the property owner wants to say anything extra, they can, and at that time, anyone's welcome to come up and add, no, you're good, just, yep, you're good.
Do you have any more questions from the commission, from Ms. Works? Hearing none, we will move to, uh, a three-minute time. You wanna keep, alright, we'll keep, uh, the three minutes for each speaker, we'll start with the, uh, landowner.
And if you wanna add, you can, if you don't, you don't have to.
Well, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
And if you do come up, if you'll just, um, write your name for me.
And you, you're not required to speak, it's just if you would, if you would like to and you have three minutes to speak, at that time, our timekeeper will raise their hand and notify me and will ask you, and then we will also ask any questions that we may have and stuff, so if you'd like to speak, you're not required to.
I don't have anything to add to it unless I have questions.
Alright, so we're, we're good, uh, would anyone else care to speak since the landowner doesn't?
I have some questions.
Well, you, you can come up, uh, just, yeah, we'll take questions to you.
So it's a twenty-nine acre parcel of land, and I'm unclear on like if the current owners decide to sale, how many?
Can you state your name just so we can have it in line down for us?
Okay, Lisa, Lisa Rawl. Um, so it's twenty-nine acres of land, if the current owners decide to sell, how many housing units could be developed in that area?
So currently, the way that it's zoned right now, RG, is ten thousand square feet per lot size, okay? If it rezones to R two rule, it's an acre minimum. So it's a substantially bigger difference if it goes to R two, it's a lot bigger lot size, I mean, almost a fourth, I mean, the quadruple the, um, size.
So if you got twenty-nine acres, it could be a maximum of a twenty-nine house.
With RG, well, I mean, with R two rule, with RG, it could be a lot more.
Right, a lot more, okay.
Just for reference, there's forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square foot in an acre, so at ten thousand, you're looking at roughly
Four of the, yeah.
Four point three five residents.
Okay.
So, there'd be much greater density, more houses under current zoning. If rezoned, it'll only be one residence per acre.
Do y'all have a copy of the map of the property where it borders, the twenty-nine acres?
The twenty-nine acres would be the highlighted.
Highlight, it's in blue.
In blue, not light blue, it's a light blue.
What, what they're asking, R two is in the blue, dark blue.
That's the lot that we're talking about now?
Is highlighted in around with, is, is the cream?
Oh, I see, I see, that, that aqua color, that's the lot. Okay, okay, thank you.
I thought I would like to say something.
Okay, you, you're welcome to.
Okay.
Well, so, anyone who wants to speak?
So for the record, I'm Brandy Vanderplug. And the only thing I wanted to say, cause I think this might clear it up, cause I think this is really confusing everybody, is that my understanding from the prior owners is that prior to their ownership, someone came in and turned this into RG with the intention, the Sonia Drive and the Eagle Drive, their intention was to build homes on this property. And the reason that we know that is because the little cutout at the top, right before you see Sonia Drive, that house does not face Cypress Lakes Road, it faces Sonia Drive. So it actually looks like it's sideways when you drive down that Cypress Lakes Road. And then, right where you see the ER on Whitener, that house also faces towards what would be Eagle Drive. They didn't face it towards Whitener Road. So that was their initial intent, was to make this into a housing development, and we're trying to get it out of that. And I think that's what didn't, wasn't very clear. And we didn't know that either until we started looking at all the pictures and it didn't make any sense. That's all I wanted to say, it was just for clarification purposes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Would anyone else care to, or have any questions? Yes, sir, please come up, sign your name.
I just had a question, my question was, we received the zoning letter, and I would just, my question was, is it gonna affect the homes on Cypress Lakes?
No, this will only affect the property that's being, if you were, what is it, they notify all adjacent landowners? Every adjacent landowner received the letter, and it's the only one that we're looking at would be the highlighted one, it will not affect any of the other properties.
And I do wanna add that with, if it gets approved, this does not change anyone's tax, uh, rates for your property. Does, does not affect any of that.
Alright, I just, I was just making sure that it wasn't gonna affect the entry to our property overnight, you know, like Cypress Lakes.
No, sir, no, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we answered our question, I live on Cypress, will it wanna affect anything?
If, if you don't mind, just so we can have it on the record. No, that's fine.
My name is Kim Brown, I live on Cypress Lakes Road, and my concern was, and I think, I think you forgot to do that, I was wondering where they're gonna put animals right in front of my house. I'm the, the darts double wide on the corner of Cypress and Whitener, which is on the opposite side of the track they're talking about, correct?
Yeah, so, yes.
So I'm, I'm fine. Okay? Thank you for explaining.
Yes, ma'am.
And good luck with your animals.
Anyone else care to share anything? Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, I'll take a motion from the commission on both. Alright, all those in favor of rezoning?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Alright.
So it will go to council camp, county council three times, but.
Yeah, just so everyone's clear, this is not the final vote on it, it will go to county council. They will have three readings on it, normally second reading will have a public hearing for people to speak again, either for or against, and they will have the final say, so we act as an advisory committee to them. And so we're just a recommendation on how it should go.
And y'all?
On to our next item, the text amendment one five three point zero nine zero residential master plan district.
So what this is, is at our last meeting, um, you all proposed to county council to remove cluster from our zoning ordinance. This is what staff has come up with in its place, but what I wanna start out with is, this is not the only way, I guess, to say a developer could potentially develop a development. If they purchase a tract that's R two rule and it's twenty acres, and they wanna do one acre lot size, then they don't have to go through a rezoning, it's already there, they just skip the, you know, they don't have to worry about this, they go straight to the LDR and they follow those requirements, same as if it's R, it's already zoned RS. Or same thing as if it's R two, they come to you all for rezoning, y'all think it's a good rezoning, it goes to RS, then they, they go straight to the LDR. So this is not something that has to be done, this is just another option. Um, we tried to make this, um, we, we tried to listen to planning commission council on some things that was major concerns within the cluster, and we addressed that here, higher, you'll see in here and you've read higher, um, setbacks, there's certain lands that you can't use within those buffers and setbacks and so forth. So again, this is just an option, it does, developers does, do not have to use this, this is, again, just an option. Um, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna read through it kinda by section, so if you've read through it and you have questions, um, we'll kinda stop after each section and I can answer any questions that y'all have. So basically, um, letter A just explains what a residential master plan district is. Um, it's for higher density residential only areas, um, where the principal use of land may include smaller lot, um, subdivisions, zero lot line developments, patio homes, duplexes, townhouses. Basically, it's, um, equivalent to a planned development minus you don't have to have commercial, um, land involved. So again, it can be any type of, of residential units within, um, this district. Um, so the minimum area is it has to be ten contiguous acres. So if it's an eight acre tract, they would not qualify to even, um, begin to look at this process. Um, any, do we have any questions so far?
No.
Okay.
I got one comment, just from a land sur- surveying perspective. We ran into something many, many years ago about the difference in what a townhouse is versus a double occupancy that has a joint ownership wall. I don't know if you want to, I mean, and I know that is nitpicky, but it became a big ordeal. So joint wall ownership residence.
Wow. Joint, what did you say?
Wall, it's, it's a townhouse, but it's owned by different people, and the, one of the walls is owned jointly.
Okay.
With two contiguous people.
Okay.
I, I don't understand.
I know.
I mean, and then who do, who takes care of the roof and I, I, I gotta, I know.
Well, probably, that's exactly what happened, that's a whole nother story.
And I don't know who does what.
Yeah, a lot of times it's the H O.
But there's a couple of these on Whitener Road.
The joint ownership or the duplexes?
Well, I don't know, two houses with two doors there.
And you might can say, AKA, also known as a joint wall owner, how, I don't know how you wanna do that, but you might wanna cover it.
Okay.
There's three or four of them on Whitener, right along what he talked about.
Yeah, I don't know if those are owned or if they're rentals.
I don't know.
County attorney might can show some light on it.
I don't know who, hey.
Alright, so, um, within an RMPD, the maximum density, um, shall be eight dwellings units per acre max. So I mean, they don't have to put eight per acre, but that would be the most that a site plan, um, would allow. And then, an exterior setback of twenty feet shall be required along the perimeter of all property lines, along the outside border of the development. So within a, an RMPD, they're, the developer will actually get to design their development. There is no required setbacks, there is no required, um, lot size. But if the, all the lots that are on the exterior of the development has to be twenty foot from that lot line. The interior lots, no, but any lot that's on the exterior of that tract of land has to be twenty foot from that rear property line. And with that being said, number three, um, is it, that it would re, we would require a preserved buffer area of existing plants and trees of at least a hundred feet in width, and that's around the entire tract. Um, if they don't currently have a hundred foot of existing trees and buffer, you gotta plant them. Um, so essentially, it's basically at a site, you, you wouldn't be able to, to see the development.
Are we gonna have anything that says how they have to maintain that hundred foot buffer?
Um, so they have to abide by section or subsection one fifty-three, one eighty-two, that's already established in the zoning code.
Okay.
And does that section designate what plants go in there, or is it choice?
I believe it is choice.
Cause we wouldn't want any invasive species.
I mean, I think it lit, I think it talks about invasive, but I don't think it says oak or, you know, certain like that, but I can, I can double check. Is there anything you wanna add that, that has to be, you know, used, or just no invasive?
The only thing that I know of is the, um, Bradford pears.
Yeah, they'd be under the invasive.
They're rogue, they have rogue, I don't know what they're called now, but they have planted, replanted themselves and have taken over, so they're trying to get rid of all Bradford pears. That's the only thing that pops in my mind.
Um, and then within that hundred feet, um, wetlands and stormwater retention areas would not be allowed. So if they have to have a retention pond, it would not be allowed within any of that hundred foot around the development.
Yeah, I think we probably should have something in there as far as dead tree removal, because then it's gonna have some kinda fire hazard and stuff. I know Mr. Mike's a far background, I just think if we create a hundred foot buffer, we need to have something in there for s, for some safety precautions, just so that we don't create a buffer they can't do anything with, and then it becomes a hazard. Wouldn't you?
Well, it's just naturally preserved buffer, just don't, they, they'll have to.
I hate to put you on the spot.
No, I don't, I guess I don't.
I was just thinking that we wouldn't want any.
Anything like that, we just, the naturally preserved buffer area around it, unless there's nothing they have to plant some of, as far as keeping it up, I don't.
But, but I mean, since.
Too much, I, y'all probably gonna, we keep up some of mine, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I just didn't want it to, for us to put in there that they can't do anything with it, and then they have an issue with trees that die, I, I don't have, uh, one fifty-three point one eight two in front of me. I just wanted to make sure that we do have something where it covers that they can remove.
Well, they, um, will have to, as we get further back in here, they will have to, um, they will have to submit a landscape plan, um, I mean, so we can put verbiage in there, that we could, you know, maintain, um, maintain the buffer area.
Okay. Any, any endangerment from the tree.
You probably put something in there to the effect of maintaining the place and whether it's empty or like time, we will get to a lot of that, like you need to go back and replant it, and like you were saying, the entire habit.
Yeah, I'm just kinda thinking that and the safety hazard of if they have a buffer they can't do anything with, and then the trees start, you know, I just wanna make sure that we have something covered for that replace, you know.
Not, the only thing I got too, wetlands is not included in that buffer area, I don't.
That would mean that they would have to come down any wetlands a hundred foot.
Well, beyond, I, I guess, some of my experience with these type things was down, my engineer daddy's down at Dakota, where the wetlands and marshlands were considered part of that flood type thing, and that was the buffer zone, I mean, backing up to it, if, if the people are bordering a creek or wetland area, then they gotta come a hundred foot further from that. I guess I'd rather it be properly sized a hundred feet, whether it's a wetland.
I mean, this is up for discussion, so if y'all wanna take, if, if y'all are good with the wet, yeah, if y'all are good with the wetlands included in the buffer, we can, you know, address that, that as well.
Bonds, so many of the retention bonds, that's where they only put, I mean, some, some retention bonds, I've actually had experience of like an amendment to the property, they'll have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just don't like that, keeping.
Well, the only, the only thing that, on that same note, is the wetlands typically on any type of improvement have to be delineated. And so somebody is going to have to spend some money to get those wetlands delineated and shown exactly where the delineation line is. That's gonna cost, and I'm with Mike.
That'll be any kind of permit or anything like that, and I guess.
And they'll require a setback.
That's actually the out, that's actually the out in fifty-three out lane too.
Okay.
They have to lay out streams, wetlands, required buffers, shall be shown on all site plans, and some of the last work.
Does it say delineated wetlands?
It doesn't say delineated.
That's the key.
And required buffers.
Hate for that be wetland, you gotta come a hundred foot off without additional, I don't want to ever let the.
Well, the thing that would concern me about, I don't want me to cut you off, but just thinking is, with the high density that could be allowed on this with eight dwellings, you know, I wouldn't, you're gonna have a lot of drainage and stuff, I'm just sitting, just trying to think, you know, these are gonna be super small lots, and I don't know kinda where you're talking about delineation, do you know exactly how far that would be off?
No, it's whoever does, the, the company that, that is hired to come in, they'll actually, like, do a topographic survey of it, and they'll mark it with like stakes and flagging and stuff to show exactly where it is, and then when the survey is done, those stakes and marks show up on the plat.
Yeah.
As the delineated area.
It can't be.
Yeah, so you, it, it's not like following a, a, a contour line on a topo, it's gotta be, somebody's actually got to go in and have it delineated.
So the thing that I'm just concerned with, if we, especially if we cut back into the hundred foot buffer any, is that we're gonna have a lot of runoff from these developments, and we need to make sure that it all stays on site.
Well, the stormwater pollution prevention plan will take care of all that.
Okay.
How you run foot for your hundred foot.
Just a hundred foot.
And buffer area.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the engineering pieces, but that makes the most sense, I mean, those things, it's gotta change, and then, what happens, I mean, we're specific with the hundred feet, right? I mean, if it's ninety-nine or, or if it's, you know, a hundred and two at some point, is that gonna be an issue, I don't, I mean, I'm with you, I, I think a hundred feet and.
Yeah, basically a hundred foot all the way around it, plus we add the caveat for delineation.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I got a note about that in the landscape part, and we wanna get to it.
Alright, so, so that I understand, y'all are comfortable with wet, the wetlands and the stormwater being within the hundred feet. So what we can do is, when you come over here, um, to the development standards where they've got to produce, um, a site plan, we can put there, we want to be shown the delineated wetlands, does that, that work good, that, is everybody in agreeance with that?
Alright.
That wetland's gonna be a standard.
Standard setback anyways. Alright, so we're, just so everyone has it, the way I understand, we're gonna have a hundred foot buffer all the way around, and then on any streams or wetlands, we'll have a delineation line that will also be a setback.
On the, on the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Anything else before we move on to how they get to an establishment? Good? So, um, where and how RMP districts are permitted? So basically, what would happen is, for an example, the rezoning that we just had, let's say that's the tract of land that they wanted to turn into an RMP. They would have to go through a rezoning through you all. Um, so it's basically would, would happen just like a, a rezoning. Um, so RMP districts shall be established by amendment to the official zoning map and related, um, related actions, and basically that means it would go through county council. Tract suitable in location and character to the use and structures proposed are to be planned and developed in, um, let's see, I lost my, are to be planned and developed according to the requirements and procedures set forth herein, which means all the requirements within the, the ordinance. All plans for the proposed RMP district rezoning must accompany the amendment request. So that means when they come to you all for the rezoning request to be rezoned to an RMP, they have to have their site plan ready. It ju, they just can't say, hey, I'm interested in doing it, can I get a rezoning? They have to have that site plan that shows everything that they're gonna do. Um, and that's, when applying for a zoning amendment for an RMP district, the applicant shall provide a detailed master plan that outlines the intended development pattern for the site, which will be a, the approved development plan. Um, the zoning administrator with input from county agencies responsible for providing service to the proposed development shall provide, um, the planning commission with recommendations. So basically, that goes back to the LDR where we establish that review committee. So anybody who would review a regular development would also review, um, would review these. Um, the planning commission may review the request up to two times to encourage public input on the design of the master plan. Um, the commission may take additional time beyond the typical thirty-day review period, um, as identified in, um, section one fifty-three zero five four with the approval of the applicant. Um, if applicant does not agree to the extension of time necessary, um, it will be forwarded to county council. And it would be. And it would be turned over to them with, uh, y'all's concerns, that it, of the reasons why y'all hadn't, um, sent it over to them already. Um, let's see, upon approval by county council, the approved RMPD master plan and related documents. Shall be the govern- governing documents for the development, development approvals on the site. So basically whatever county council approves, that's it.
Just, I don't mean to stop you, I just had a question about the, the language on that. May review the request up to two times?
So they could, they could submit their.
And that would be up to us, though.
Right, you wouldn't have to, but let's say you have a room full that first night, and there's still a lot of uncertainties. You can push, say, hey, you know, we're gonna review it a second time, you do not have to make a decision that night, you can take the time to review. And if you need more than two times, two meetings basically, then the developer has to give you permission.
Yeah.
If they don't, then you send it to county council with the discern.
Second time's protected, I mean, we, we dictate that, the third time would be up.
That's correct, that's right, you get two without their permission, the third or fourth, fifth would have to be with their permission. If they say, no, I've had enough of it, then you would send it over to council and say, hey, here's the concerns we have, these haven't been addressed.
Is that common, is there excluding other spots for this, or?
No, that is, that's only, we don't allow, well, we don't have that set up for any other residential development.
In the instance that it does, for some reason go that route, it would go without a vote from.
Yeah, it would, it would not, in the minute.
Be forced to take a vote.
Nope, nope, it would come with a non-recommendation from planning commission.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, right, and the item shall be forwarded to county council noting the commission's concerned without a recommendation, so y'all would not be linked to. A, um, yes or no.
Alright.
Um, so then number four is basically how it would be identified on the map. Um, instead of like you see RG, R two, um, if it rezoned, it would go RMPD. One, two, three, so forth.
It would have its own zoning classification on the map?
Y- yeah, so instead of it saying RG and R two, that particular one, let's say if. That track we were just rezoned was going for and it got passed, it would show RMPD one. Let's say another track, two years down the road, went through another one, it would be RMPD two. And then that way, if five years down the road someone has a question, they say, okay, I'm looking at this track, it's RMPD one. Then we go to all the documents that we've had for that particular one. And, um, the consultant that helped us with this said we could even drag that out to be like. RMPD twenty twenty-five one, or RMPD twenty twenty-five in the month, we can, uh, we can, we went simple.
So that it would be easy for staff to know the date.
We went simple, but we can make, that is not a, a, you know, a requirement, we can make it whatever we wanna make it.
Yeah, I mean, like it says, that's just for an example.
A little nitpicky thing. It's this interchangeable planning commission versus the planning commission, are we the joint planning commission? Cause some of it's capitalized, some of it's not, like I said, nitpicky.
Where, where is that at?
Top of page two, and provide the planning commission, that these not capitalize the next one.
Okay.
The planning commission, and then the third line down at the end, it says the commission.
I, I got you, okay.
And then.
Address all the same, okay.
Yeah, and then on number five, same thing, and then it's throughout, number six, same thing.
I see it, yep, we can do that, not a problem. Um, so going down to number five, um, any amendments to the RMPD master plan. Shall be reviewed, um, by the planning commission and approved by county council. So we've got major is A, and on B, that should be, I'm sorry, A is minor. B, that's another typo I call, that should be major, um, so letter A is minor changes, and basically. Um, I would have the authority to approve that, so it's very simple changes like floor plans of the houses. Because they will, in their site plan packet, have to show examples of what these houses are gonna look like. So, you know, if y'all want a development that's all brick, or are all hardy board, no vinyl. All of that is in your hands to approve, or rec, you know, they have to, to show all of that to you all upfront. So you have the authority, now if you want them all the same color, or whatever, all of that is decided by you all.
So it'd be similar to what we discussed before with the PPD?
This is exactly like a PDD, except for PDD's re, you have to have commercial. This is taking the commercial out and it's just residential, so yes, but they would have to provide, um, floor plans. Facades, landscaping, um, all of their drainage, all of that. And with that being said, we consider those minor, so, um, I would have the authority to make those change, or to approve it. And then if I approve it, then it would, would come to you all, but I would, if I say no, then it wouldn't come to you all unless they. Um, decide that they don't agree with me.
Another little nitpicky type typographical thing, you might wanna, under A, five A, the last word. To allow such change, you might wanna put parentheses, S, close parentheses, since the first says minor changes.
Okay.
And for line four, you have not substantially altered, do you have any kind of clarification about what not substantially?
We do not, um, basically, we're just saying, you know, if it, if it's.
It'd be up to your office attorney.
I mean, we can, we can address that if y'all wanna put, you know, the definition of what substantially would, would be, we can do that.
And my concern, just kinda dealing with the previous last couple of weeks and seeing some stuff that's happened in neighboring counties. Is with the drainage structure and stuff, that, I'm assuming that would go through the public works department?
Yes, and they have to also provide a, um.
Well, just, just because where it said the changes and stuff.
Yeah, if, if anything changes of that, that would go to the, the, yeah, so let, let's say they wanna change, um.
Size pipe used or.
Yeah, that would all get, yeah, passed down to that particular person.
Because I've just, I've seen some issues in neighboring counties would run off from these storms, just because. And I know that was something that was in the first copy of this, that with the impervious soils and stuff. That's one thing I wanna make sure that we cover our bases on.
Yep, and in the site plan, they have to, to, um, note any pervious and impervious areas.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep. Um, a major change, um, would come to y'all and then county council, and that would be. Um, let's say they, on their site plan had four. Houses per acre, and they're like, okay, to make it work now, after looking at costs, we need to be at six per, per acre. And that changes the whole site plan, that would not be considered minor, that would come to you all, and then of course county council.
What happens in the instance that a major request is made and we deny it?
Then it's, then it's denied, they, yeah.
I mean, I, I just, cause it's not kinda listed on there.
Yeah, it's, it's denied.
Yeah, I was gonna ask similar questions at the end of five A, about you declining any small changes.
So if I, so in, for a minor, if I deny it, then they have the right to still go above me for you all. So if I say no, and they don't essentially like that answer, can't work around it, then it would come to y'all and county council. Now, if I say yes, then they change their site plan and they move forward.
Is that just understood, or do we need to put something in there about if an appeal is made to one of our? I mean, if an appeal's made to ours, it would still go to county council, correct?
Yeah.
So, but maybe in that A section, we put in there that if a, appeal is made to a decline. That it would still be referred to joint planning commission? I don't know if that's just a standard interpreted thing or not.
Add that.
Maybe do it as a note in between A and B.
Yeah. Just trying to get us inclusive, so we're not going back and forth from one area to another.
Okay. Um, and then we talked about the major. Um, number six, the developer is authorized to begin construction of streets and infrastructure following preliminary plat approval by the planning commission. Um, so basically, once the site plan is approved and the rezoning has taken place. Then at that time, they will be, um, to the preliminary plat. And the requirements of the preliminary plat will then be the same as what's in your LDR. Um, so full survey, all, all of that, and it will actually be recorded at the courthouse.
Okay, I have several questions about that, if they're doing a, um, if they're doing a final plat at this point. Are the property corners already set and?
Property, so under a preliminary plat, the property corners are set.
Okay, we were talking about this buffer a while ago, I think it's a, a good idea for them to put a pin. On the hundred foot line. Because if this is something that a HOA, or a surveyor, or a adjoining property owner. Has a problem with the guy next door whose tree has fallen, it would be nice to know exactly where that hundred foot is. Without having to jump through a bunch of hoops.
Just basically on every property line that, that borders the hundred foot line would require a pin.
Border, where the property line intersects the hundred foot buffer. And the other thing that.
And that's where the twenty foot would go into place too, if, if their property line touches that hundred foot buffer. Then that's where they don't have an option, they have to be twenty foot off of it.
She was just, I think, stating for, so there weren't controversy.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's where the twenty foot would come in, is where it touches that, the hundred foot buffer.
Okay.
But yeah, so the preliminary plat will show all of the property lines, and it will actually be recorded, and it will show. Own, does, own public GIS. All of that'd be shown.
I think it, South Carolina Department of Land Surveying and Professional Engineers. Do not recognize preliminary plats. So if, we don't need to call it a preliminary plat, if it's gotta meet NPDs standards. So, we need to put, if you're gonna call it a preliminary plat, then it needs to have something in there that says it needs to meet the minimum standards. For surveying in South Carolina. Because if it doesn't say that, and they bring your preliminary plat and it doesn't have a meets and bounds description on it.
Is, is defined in the LDR under preliminary, does that make sense? So everything that a regular developer would have to do for a preliminary plat would go back here, but we can, we can put that subsection. Cause we put it in here, chapter one fifty-four, the subdivision regulations, but we can actually list those if, if that would be better. The requirements of a preliminary, we can put letter six A, the requirements of a preliminary plat. Instead of just referencing the chapter one fifty-four.
Even call it preliminary plat, i- if you're gonna record it, it's got to be a final plat. A preliminary plat can't be recorded according to South Carolina Board of Registration.
Gonna have to be addressed in the LDR, because that's, we've always recorded our preliminary plats. And in any other.
If it says preliminary, it's, they don't recognize it. Board of License and of Land Practice and Surveying in South Carolina, they don't recognize. That's another county attorney question, you can find that.
I'll get that addressed, cause if that's the case, then we've got some LDR updates to do.
Yeah, but it's still, council hasn't addressed it yet, so.
You know, I have a question kind of order of operations wise, so this has, that's, they can start construction assuming. But our decision is non-binding to county council.
So county council approves the site plan, which is the drawing. They would not be involved with the meets and the bounds of the preliminary plat, do you follow me on that? So they, they've approved the actual site plan, but they don't have to approve the preliminary plat. Is that something y'all want them to approve as well?
Oh, we don't do that on the subdivisions, so I don't see why we should.
I wouldn't think so.
No.
I think, you know, fellas gotta draw something out and see, hey, did that suit everybody? And then he'll go back out, yeah, you do, put pins in and survey it.
And then y'all are, yeah, that, that's the idea of it, but if y'all want it to go to council, I mean, we can easily send it to council. Yep, so, so basically the site plan is not, the, the money hasn't been spent to go out and mark. Each individual with their equipment, it's just a computer drawn idea showing lot size and stuff like that. Fillwork hasn't physically taken place on the ground.
Council would have already approved the idea of it, just not the.
Preliminary, yeah, but.
Particular.
Yeah, but when they get to this point, the state, the pins are in the ground for each individual road, the, the lots, the everything.
And I mean, and two, council has to pass this, so basically council would be signing off saying, you know, we're fine with it being dug that way.
Yep.
Well, now, you say council has to pass it, but second two is.
No, this, they have to pass this, so they would know. Yeah, so they would know that that's in there, it wouldn't be something like they. Basically when, basically when they pass this, they would be consenting to us doing that.
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna call them tomorrow and get that squared away.
Okay.
Um, so there may be some changes in verbiage for preliminary coming up, um. So the final approved plan, which is again, the site plan, um, and we can put final approved site plan. Is in fact for a two year, um, or development scheduled as specified. So let's say in there, when they come to you all, um, and then county council for approval. If they know upfront that two years is not a timeframe that they can achieve. They can upfront say, hey, I, this is at least gonna be three years. Um, if they don't do that, then it's gonna be a two year, um, scheduled, and then if for some reason. Um, they can't get it in two years, um, they can come to you all, the planning commission. For a one year, um, extension, and then the board, planning commission could then essentially, they could come up to five times. But after, after five, it's, it's done, you, they wouldn't be able to ask for an extension to, um, continue with the project.
Alright, just.
And that means complete build out.
That, that's what I was about to say, so they would have, that would be completed project in two years, or how many?
Yep.
Or basically, they have to get it completed within five years.
So let's say they're, they're, when they submit it, they think two years is, they can do it, well, you know, we have a hurricane. You know, if something unforeseen happens, they could come to y'all, explain the situation, you could grant the extension. But after five coming to you all, then it's no more extensions.
I like that, I like it where they can't just come out, get permits, put them in a file cabinet, and wait till they have time to come to the project.
Um, and letter A addresses if that was to happen, um.
If a timely and properly written application? Instead of proper written application?
Alright, where are you at?
The third line.
Okay, if, say, alright, say approval period, now what, what we change it?
Timely and properly written application.
And, oh, I got it, got it, okay.
On number six, the last two words, restricted covenants, uh. Other approved conditions identified by the planning commission including according to restricted covenants, whose restricted covenants.
Theirs, so in, mm-hmm, theirs. Yes, you, you. No, we will not, we will know what their restrictive covenants are upfront, but we will not be enforcing those. It will be up to that homeowners association to enforce it. Okay.
Just one question from seven two, so the, the planning approval, or the planning mission may approve applications for up to five annual extensions? So these are individual applications where extending it one year at a time?
Yeah, so let's say they come back for one, their, you know, their one year extension is about up, they come back before y'all. And it would, I mean, they have to have legit reasons why they need this, that, you know, the extension, it's not that, oh, well, they got busy with another pro-. You know, it's, and y'all have the right to deny, even at the first extension, you have the right to deny it.
Yeah, just the, the kind of verbiage that the PM has been filed with the planning commission, and it, it makes it seem like you only have to. Submit one application.
Okay, I'll, I'll, yeah, add verbiage for each, each, okay. Um, if the developer responsible party fails to begin, fails to progress, or fails to complete the development. Um, the county may charge the developer, uh, with the violation of the zoning ordinance. Um, we can rezon it. Um, we can rezone it back, um, to what, or rezone it to what it was prior, or what the planning commission, county council feels it should go back into, or a combination, um, of these.
Yeah, that, that was kind of my question is, alright, in the instance that it, it does become denied, they just have to basically leave it as is and walk away?
As, the understanding I have is yes.
And?
Can't be rezoned.
Yeah, but would it just be the unfinished section would be rezoned, or would it be all of the?
Let me, let me get some clarity on that.
Yeah, 'cause I'm kind of curious if it's something where basically-
Somebody else.
Yeah, 'cause the properties, 'cause I mean, it, they wouldn't conform with any of our other residential being if, you know, if they started half of it, completed half, and then went to the other,
Yep, I follow you.
then we would have issues with rezoning because of density and stuff like that. And I mean, I'm assuming we're not gonna say, uh, they have to vacate their premises.
So I think basically what's gonna happen is, in reading the second half of this again, it sounds like the only way that it will probably be rezoned would be-
If nothing is-
If nothing is there, if this, if stuff has happened, basically it looks like you're gonna find them and try to get the developer to-
Finish.
Finish, or either submit back a site plan that shows what's done and then turn over the other half, or, you know, but I'll get, I'll get some clarification on that.
Yeah, 'cause I mean-
Maybe phase it or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My concern there would be, we get, you know, they've done a bunch of grading work and haven't finished, and they just, we end up with a mess that, you rezoned, but it's unusable land because of issues.
Yeah, and maybe a bond to cover or something could be good.
The other thing on that, and is the SW three P goes along with the contractor's grading plan. If they walk away, who, who maintains that? Who takes care of that?
Yep. I'll find out that.
And then if, nothing in here, actually providing notice to them, is that standard language somewhere else? Could they reach the end of it that we're about to go through?
Uh, I mean, I think, yeah, but we can, it's better to put it in here.
And then you had said that where it says may rezone the property, may rezone the property back to where it was before, I mean-
It, that, it, that would-
That's what, that's the gray area we're discussing.
That's the gray area, yeah, I think, the way I interpret it is the planning commission would have the ability to decide what, you know, whether it conforms with R two, or whether it's more an RS commu- you know-
Yeah, 'cause couldn't we possibly end up with a spot zoning issue with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, I mean, that's kind of my concern with that is.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah, 'cause this could exist anywhere in the county, one of these RMPDs. So it's not necessarily where it would be light zoned with any neighboring property. And that, that's the, why you can't just revert it back.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Katie, is there anything involving impact fees?
So, to, from what I understand is to charge an impact fee, that's a whole different ballgame with ordinances, so there's a lot that goes into impact fees, so, no, this does not touch impact fees.
I know council has mentioned some stuff. They're not a fan of impact fees, because impact fees are, my understanding, I could be totally wrong. They're, from my talks with them, they're regulated by the state. They have to be spent within like a seven-year period.
And, and if, if you, if you name it for an impact fee for something, it has to be spent for that. It can't be spent for-
It, you, you kind of-
If it's fire impact fees, you gotta spend it on fire. If, if, you can't spend it on roads or whatever, so that's-
Yeah, it doesn't leave any leeway in it, and the projects also have to be completed in that seven-year time span, or the money just reverts back to the state, and the state takes the money, and that's the concern with, the county could possibly end up losing the impact fee and it just going to the state, and we never see it, just on the basis of a project not being completed.
Now, if y'all, you know, right now, you know, there's no, um, fees associated with it, so if, you know, if you, this is a hundred acre track, and you wanna have an application of fee of, you know, some amount of money per acre, I mean, that, but, I mean, it's not gonna be impact fees, and it would probably not be the, come to the amount of money of an impact fee.
I think, I think we might need to just consider, if it is a hundred acre track, that they do it in phases instead of accepting the whole thing. Let's say, okay, phase one is, you're gonna have a cul-de-sac here, you develop this, and we stop until all of this is done, and then we do phase two, where this road turns down and sew it, so.
So you think instead of just having a minimum size, that we basically probably have a maximum in phase size?
Well, I'm just saying on a hundred acre piece of property with all the infrastructure-
It'd be impossible to do in two years.
It'd be, yes, it'll be impossible.
Even the residential houses built for that. That, that's my other thing, the, or, in the, the houses don't, do they have to be finished being built in that two-year period?
That's why, they know what, I mean, if it's a, if it's an, or, yeah, I mean, they, yeah, they, if it's a hundred acres, they're gonna come in and say, this is not a two-year plan. This is a ten-year plan.
I think we might. Look at capital.
Yeah, I mean, when they bring your site plan to y'all, that, that time you could-
Do we have the right to tell them you're gonna have to phase this project?
I mean-
To be able to meet your timeline, you know, a two-year timeline?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the-
So we're, it basically, it could, could, one, RMPD could change into multiple smaller RMPDs, is what you're kind of saying, eh?
Yeah, so-
Well, just real quick, how do we, how do we, how are we in a position to make a determination about whether it should be divided?
Well, that's what we're, we're just discussing.
Yeah, and that, and that's what I'm asking, is like, I mean, we're not-
Well, I didn't even suggest maybe doing a max of, make it a ten acre.
We, we would have to set, you know, we have a minimum of ten acres, we would probably have to set a maximum at, basically where it states that can be done at one time. Not saying that they can't do more than that, but they can only do that much at one time to keep it on a manageable timeline. Because one, two, if we rush the developers, we're gonna get an inferior product. I mean, it is the unsaid truth.
I agree.
I mean, but I-
I tell you what, let's just redo what we have here. Do we get a chance to look at it as a draft again?
Yeah, I think this one, we'll go ahead and finish going through it, and then come back again at the next meeting and look at it again.
Is that doable, Katie?
Yeah, I mean, I had planned to bring it back next month, once we get-
Okay.
The clarifications on the-
'Cause I know the last month, we just went ahead and that's-
Yeah, okay.
We're getting the hor- the cart headed horse.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um,
I think we're talking about impact fees, but in reality, the biggest impact, all this is having on counties and schools. And fire ain't making much difference, the roads ain't making much difference, but, you know, the houses is going in certain areas, it's having a bigger impact on the schools, and it really-
Yeah, and the school will be able to, um-
One of my neighbors approached me about that very thing and asked, and that's one of my notes I have to ask at the end. They asked me if a developer comes in and says they wanna develop an eighty acre piece of property, could the county make them pay the new property owner, could the county say, okay, for each lot that is developed, you have to pay X amount of dollars to the county for this lot for development of fire, school, um, police, EMS, that kind of thing.
We, council's looking at something to that effect, where we said the word impact fees, they're looking at something called development costs?
Yes.
And it would be, uh, is that something y'all, been that, would, would staff mentioned any?
I haven't been mentioned that. I mean, I haven't been talked to, but I'll bring it up to him.
Okay, I, I just, I know that the-
Because one of, one of the things that they told me was, I think it was in Greenville County, it might have been Cherokee County. The homeowner, once they took title to the property, moved in the house, the next year on their tax notice, they had a fee that they had to pay.
So that's a special tax district?
Okay.
Um, so there, like, we have a couple areas in the county right now that are special tax districts, um, for the maintenance of their roads. So I mean, I know that's, I mean, we have special tax districts and they're-
'Cause what they said was they, they had a timeline, I'm just gonna say it's a five-year timeline for the first five years they own their home, just like on a mortgage, when you have to pay mortgage fees or whatever. On the first five years until you pay it down so long, you paid the bank an extra amount of money, well, that's the same thing. Five years on their taxes, they pay an extra whatever to help build fire departments and everything.
Yep, so that would be a special tax district, okay. I can add that in to ask.
Yeah, 'cause I know, I've seen some school districts have paid for entire schools just off of those fees.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're good, no, no. Um, are we good to move to F?
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, letter F basically talks about, um, the standards, um, the, where the site plan will show your minimum, um, lot areas, your setbacks, density, height of structures, parking, buffering, all that. Um, so, letter, or number one, um, a site plan of development outlining scale dimensions of the property, including adjoining public and private right-of-ways and easements. Um, the plan shall detail the location, arrangement, dimensions, um, extent and character of the following. So that, the site plan that would come to you all would show, um, adjacent streets and alleys, structures by type of use, the exterior material, height of the structure, bedroom max, gross floor area, basically all of what the house is gonna look like. Um, and the lane coverage of the buildings and the impervious area, um, the setbacks between structures and their property lines, um, residential densities by housing type, and then the maximum number of dwelling units. Um, and it would show the interior streets and drive, um, egress, ingress, all of that good stuff. Um, parking, including, um, boats, campers, trailers, all of that good stuff, if it's gonna be allowed. If not, if it is, is it in the rear yards? I mean, all of that would have to be addressed. Um, where they're gonna have their dumpster locations, mailbox locations, um, show the impervious and impervious areas, show the open recreation space and common area. Now, I wanted to address letter, this one. In the cluster, we had a certain percentage of the usable land as green space or open recreation space. We do not, um, give a percentage in here. Is that something you do wanna add or, or not?
I think it'd be good to have, uh, uh, I think that, I mean, that, that's my personal feeling, that any of these developments should offer some kind of recreational space on site, especially you're gonna, you consider we have a hundred foot buffer on these. We need to have some kind of-
Well, I think if you don't, then we're gonna get into some, um, legalities of trying to circumvent families from not coming in there, and then we might get into some issues with discrimination.
The, the, does staff have a recommendation on, on a size, or is that something we'd probably need to look at addressing at the next meeting?
Um, I can get some recommendations.
Yeah, what would be a typical?
Can you use the rec- the hundred foot buffer for the recreation space?
No, I would, I wouldn't want that. I would like to see that we have-
They're inside of the-
Basically, they would need to have almost like a park inside.
I think he's talking about like walking trails.
Yeah.
These spaces are recreational. I mean, that's, most of these things have been set up on green space, and that can be-
Anything.
Involve the or it can be-
But like walking trails, you could put a walking trail through that hundred, would that, would that constitute a recreation space?
I think I wouldn't want that.
Harverson does that. They did it about-
I think if we, if you're gonna allow, we need to put it in writing that walking, on, walking trail or something.
Yeah, if we're gonna allow that, we would almost need a section on the buffer and how it can be used.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and that might be, instead of a buffer, it might be a common area.
Mm-hmm.
I don't like-
I don't like that. I wouldn't wanna buy a lot that somebody can walk behind my house at will, but, you know, but if we're gonna do a, if we, if we're gonna do a walking trail, it-
I mean, it, the problem with that is, if you're gonna do a walking trail, you're gonna have to have entrances and exits for it.
ADA compliance.
Yeah.
I think we need to stay away from that.
So, y'all want me to do the research on it or not?
I mean, I hate to waste your time on it, because I really-
You could go down to Harverson and walk through their trails. They're probably fifty foot from the houses or more. And it's really nice, it's all well-lighted, and they got exercise equipment. So if you set it up in such a way that it was not on your backyard,
Yeah.
but in the middle of the woods.
I'd be okay with that.
The, the hood, the hood is- It's got a green space, which is right.
I believe it does, yes.
And see, not mirror it.
This is basically a hood minus of-
Commercial.
Commercial stuff.
Without mirror it.
If you do anything, make them look the same, uh, and commercial. It's got a green space buffer, and that could bring, I, I, keep this to mirror the other, I think, instead of having three or four different things Katie got to look at. So if this is a hood minus the commercial, let's make it look to like that.
Might as well.
Or why don't we make hood look like this, or, you know?
Well, you can't put as a, it, it's a, that, yeah, you can't, yeah.
Well, you got-
This is allowing something like that when I have a shopping or something.
Right.
What is an open space? What is that?
Playgrounds, a soccer field ballpark.
I just almost kind of-
Some of these things have been built around, um, there's, you have a horse in RS but can't have a ticket. I mean, to me, that's a little, that's kind of different.
And one thing I-
Some of these have been built around where you had horse stalls, that was the green space, or there was, you built on twenty acres, you had eighty acres of not walking trails per se, but areas that you could go into. And actually, it's kind of ironic, those ten square, thousand square foot lots have been set in for, less than forty thousand, 'cause people would rather, I can use eighty acres, but I only got two buck ten a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So that's sort of what, that that had been, there's a moment.
My only con- my concern with using the buffer for recreation is, I think the idea of the buffer in there is because of, is because of infringement upon neighboring landowners, and if we allow them to use the buffer, then we basically lost the purpose of the buffer.
I agree.
I don't, I don't think the buffer's-
Because-
I don't think we need to use the buffer as anything else other than a buffer.
Because, you know, the-
I think a walking trail, I guess, so.
Yeah, I thought a walking trail.
I mean, I, I mean, they're, I've been in developments and my, you know, it's-
Yeah, but these, these projects can, will be allowed, basically, we don't have any idea where one could pop up in the county. And, you know, it's not something that has to be in compliance with neighboring zoning regulations or anything like that. So I think that was kind of the idea of the buffer, is to, is privacy on the neighboring adjacent landowners that could be affected. Because, I mean, there's a-
I'll tell you, there was a, there was a walk, so my house in Greensboro, we had a development, we had a walking trail, it took us over. And there were people that bought houses because they could go out in the back of their house and take the walking trail, you know, down or ride their bike or that, that was, that was a positive. So I, I think to, I mean, I, the, for an open area, I mean, a walking trail, I think would be fine. A ball field or something like that, I agree with that. So maybe there are some distinctions on what light pass, you know, to use that space. I mean, not everybody wants, I don't want somebody to be behind my house, but there are people that do, you know, that they're, if it's convenience stuff, so.
My concern is the neighboring landowners, you know, it, it's great for the people moving into it. The neighboring landowners aren't, aren't gonna be buying the neighboring tracks so they can be part of the, and then I'm sure they would have an HOA where, you know, it'd be, they wouldn't have just anyone using those. 'Cause, like I said, this is something that would be anywhere in the county. It's not like we're gonna set where it's gonna be next door to subdivisions or something like that.
But it's gonna be in that development though.
Well, no, we're talking about the exterior here, the hundred foot buffer.
Hundred foot buffer around the edge, like if you put-
I mean, it's not-
It's still in the property now, so.
Well, it's in the property, yes.
The one you're buying, you know, and if it's, if it's there and somebody knows they're gonna buy a lot and it's gonna have a walking trail behind it, I mean, that's up to the developer then to have to worry about that.
But I think the question here is, are we defining what a minimum requirement is for free play? I think that's where we had started down the path.
Yeah.
I think we define it, and you, you research the, the percentage of green space and let's talk about it again next time.
I will, when we have some clarification.
Yeah.
Well, I think the other is too, is that if we decide to make the, the buffer space usable, then-
Yeah.
To modify how we reference one fifty-three dot one eight two.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of the green space, I just don't like the idea of incorporating the green space into the buffer. If, that'd probably be the best way to put it.
Well, and most, most around here have a separate green space, and that's why I was trying to find the difference between an open space-
And I'll get that.
A common area and a green space.
I'll, I'll get that. I'll, I'll get that.
I just knew it was in the hood, you would just look back.
Copy and paste.
I know whoever does this, he got a lot of effort.
Yeah, that, that was one of my questions.
Lot of effort in what he's got to do to make this work.
That was one of my end questions, is how likely do we see this being used? I mean, it's great that we come up with it, but in reality, if we don't.
I mean, I think.
Panel seeing it. Well, what's the reason to do this instead of a subdivision would be my best.
Okay, so let's go back to the prosperity guys.
Yeah.
I think they poss- they know that they need a, a lot size smaller than RS to make theirs work. So they know that coming to you all for an RG zoning is probably not gonna pass. Well, if they can make, they're gonna have to spend money, but if they can make it work within this. Then they have an option to do it versus just flat no. So it's, it's all in how the developer can make it work.
And, and you're, you're referencing the seven seventy-three that we ever had the discussion on, okay, so it's something that they would look at.
But maybe, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be your, your every, I don't think this would be something that your typical residential developer will use. I think this will be something that. Will have to be at a certain piece of property to make it work.
I mean, it, it's like, we're, we're making this to be how we would like.
Because you got to think, to get even eight homes.
In an acre.
On an acre, you gotta have public water, you gotta have public sewer, I mean, you gotta, the variables to line up to get this to work.
It's tough.
It's, it's gonna be tough.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, like you said, with referencing the naming, by using the year, shows that they're not planning on having many of them done.
Yeah.
And so that's.
Good point.
Okay.
What would it take to get subdivision regulations looking like with some of this stuff in it? Or they're kind of untouchable? I just like the, the buffer, i- it's a big to me for, for, for.
I mean.
For not infringing upon the neighboring landowners.
Yeah. I don't think, um.
If, we have time to address it? Or that it wants to be addressed.
I don't, I don't think you, I don't think, I don't think our council's gonna put a hundred foot buffer on any development.
Okay.
I mean, I'm saying, I'm just saying on, I mean, cause you think if, if a, a buyer comes in for a five acre track. You put a hundred foot buffer, he ain't gonna have but maybe one or two houses, I mean, I don't think.
I, I don't necessarily.
I think this is more.
A hundred foot buffer, but a buffer.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can.
A twenty foot.
I can, I can take it, I just, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we can address that next time, let's move on.
But if that's something you want to address, we need to go ahead and let me know now before it goes to county council.
Could you make the buffer proportionate to the size of the development? I mean, like, like you said, like. Yeah, so if you, you wouldn't want a hundred.
That's what I mean, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have to have a hundred foot, we could do a, you know, forty foot or twenty foot depending on the size of the lot, so yeah, that's, that's what I was saying.
I think, what did Lexington just put one when they were going through theirs, I believe, I can't remember what it was, uh.
Okay, I'll work on that and then may have an update.
Katie give you too much work.
It's all right. Um, so, number two is the landscape plan and it's basically identifying.
I did that.
Existing and proposed structure, um, proposed structure, any significant trees, proposed trees, landscaping, basically, topography with contour intervals and so forth.
I think we need to put a note up underneath there somewhere that says all natural drains should remain open. Cause if we're gonna do contours and. A grading plan, natural drains need to be open.
Okay, anything else on number two? All right, number three is basically, um, the structural detail of what the houses, um, will look like.
Well, just one kind of general question, all this stuff would have to be looked at in one meeting? Because we've, the two meetings is for the original.
No, 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 this is, this is what they bring for those two meetings if, or more, mm-hmm, this, this is what, you'll, you'll get all this upfront.
Okay, okay. Alright, I'm, I'm good with that. Alright.
So, strongly encourage, should we use that other place, it's, it's just a odd phrase, it's just like, if you want to.
Okay.
I mean, it's not a requirement, but we suggested that it is.
I think that's saying that if you use those, then you're. More likely to not get any pushback from y'all, but we can, I can change the verbiage on that. Okay, um. They would provide a, um, preliminary development schedule for the completion of roads, infrastructure, buffer yards, and other proposed improvements for general use. Um, and then we were talking about the deed restrictions that outline the standards of the development, including but not limited to the parking, easements, use of common areas, dedication of public lands. Um, and then that's, we have it in here that Newbury County has no authority or responsibility to enforce those.
What are the Newbury County residential design guidelines?
That's the L D R that, um, oh, the Newbury County, that is, yeah, so that would be like where we have not.
Yeah.
Looked into that yet or started that, it would basically be, um, if we know as a county that you don't want vinyl siding, it would be certain things like that. And if y'all don't want to have those and let them bring what they wanna do and then you modify from there, we can do that too.
But do we have them?
We don't have one yet because we've never had to use one.
Yeah, it's, it's almost, it would, it would be more like an HOA for the county.
No on that, strike that, okay. All right, strike that, and then, um. If they were gonna modify from any of the L D R, um, they would have to note that and that's basically going back to what. The road requirements, all that good stuff, and then, um, Ms. Ann brought up, we need to address at this after the final plat, so I'll get some final plat. Um, verbiage.
And, and kind of addressing what we brought up earlier about phases. I don't know, I'm just, I was, I almost wrote it down, I was kind of thinking that we almost need some, somewhere in there. The simplest way may be to have it just worded that, you know, agreed upon phase sizes between the developer and commission. So, cause I mean, some of these companies may be able to tackle some of these stuff that we don't think they can, but they can, so I don't wanna limit them from doing it.
Yeah.
But at the same time.
Well, I mean, if this is site that's already fairly level and it's already got water and sewer right at the, you know, adjoining property or whatever, that's doable, I mean, it's.
I just wanna say in that part about the two years, the project may be needed to be broken up into.
Yeah, that's what, that's where I'm, yep.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking.
That's what we were talking about.
Two years and that gives them the option to take the twenty acres, forty acres.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then maybe, and then when you say that, yeah, instead of setting the, a size, just say it can be broken into phases, agreed upon at the initial onset. Between the developer and the commission.
Phew.
So the only other question I have is that can you switch from using applicant to developer part of the way through?
Okay. Make them all match, okay. Okay.
Well, you, with a two year restriction by the time you put it out, you just, you gotta have a paint on the wall, but that's a tight time.
I was about to.
Do y'all, I mean, you wanna address that?
I have no problem with that, but, you know, he's, he, he's not a plate.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's good to have it in there at the beginning.
Well, it says for a period of two years or development schedule, so I mean, I think if they know upfront, then they'll address it then, but we can up that years if you want to.
No, I, I, I can, no problem, but if that's.
Yeah.
It's a tight time.
I think, I think if anyone comes with one of these to us, they're gonna be.
We can recommend. We can recommend basing it.
Yeah, well, I, I think too, if they come with this, they're gonna have their ducks in a row.
Well, and I think, you know, the county has a little bit of a topography map, so even if there's something rough, preliminary, we'll be able to look at it and tell if it's. Gonna be something that's maybe even gonna have wetlands or creeks or.
Yep.
Any problems like that.
I mean, just doing the houses alone on this, you know, depending, I don't think this would be any huge projects.
No, I don't think so either, I mean, eight houses in an acre is like fifty-four hundred square foot lot.
Yeah.
And they don't have to, I mean, they could do one per acre, but that's just the max we would allow.
Less than a chicken.
Not much.
Thank you for putting up with us, I know we drug this out.
You're good, you're good. Anything else?
We give you plenty of homework, we try to cut down on it normally, I think we did the reverse this time.
Okay.
All right. Discussion and informational items, our next regular meeting to be held will be September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at five forty-five P M. Anyone have any other questions for staff at this time? Hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.